The City Council Committee on Community and Economic Development will meet in person on Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024 at 6:00 PM for the purpose of discussing the outdoor dining existing agreement with Bambalina to occupy 440 square feet of city property for outdoor dining. This meeting will be held in the City Council chambers, 93 Washington Street, silent mass, second floor. This meeting is in person, but you can also join via Zoom with the link posted on the agenda, or this is being streamed on SATV. On tonight's agenda, we have the outdoor dining existing agreement with Bambalina to occupy 440 square feet of city property for outdoor dining. Absent from the committee are none, and we have no members of the committee of the whole joining us, although I will note this was not co-posted. Is there feedback? Are we good? Okay. So tonight's agenda is pretty straightforward. We have an amendment to an existing approval that the council provided on our March 28th meeting. At the March 28th meeting, we approved a list of outdoor dining requests that were in front of us. The one for Bambalina was square footage because it is not parking spaces, so it was square footage of public street. And the original approval at 288 Derby Street was for 380 square feet of public street. What was actually built was larger than that, so it was larger than the 380 square feet, but it was smaller than what was built last year because there are also the restrictions of staying within the property lines, which I think we all know it went down a little further down Derby Street last year. So I'm going to venture to say 380 was kind of an estimate until it was built and then it was measured. I think the majority, I'm pretty sure, we could, we'll open it up to comment, the building inspector has been out to measure a few times, who we have joining us this evening, along with architects representing Bambalina. And we have come up to 440 square feet, give or take a few feet, it might be 447 or 448, depending on what the final number is. So that's what the amendment in front of us this evening is. I'd like to, I put a bunch of backup documentation in our shared drive, which included emails from the city solicitor noting the property lines and the outdoor dining policy, an email from the actual property owner, which is Irish Shade Trust, because there is, I think, four feet of frontage in front of the neighboring business. So the adjacent property owner in which the area extends must submit a letter to City Council stating their acceptance of the use of the space, which they do, and that's in the shared drive as well. And there's also a message from the building inspector and a few, and a drawing from an architect landing on the 400, well, the building inspector, first, the building commissioner actually landed at 440 square feet. I think there was another visit today from an architect and a building inspector that we landed on 447 square feet. So with all of that information provided, I would like to open it up to the committee to see what questions we might have. I think a lot of this information wasn't in front of us when we were in council, so we sent it to committee to clear up, but want to know if there are any other questions or outstanding items. Counselor Jerusalem?
Thank you, Chair. I just had a question. I saw that there was a letter in the file from the landlord stating that they give them permission for the three extra square feet and towards the Wax Museum, is it?
Yeah, the three feet in front of the Wax Museum.
So the other six feet in front of the cemetery.
Yep, so that was in, if, in Vula's original email, and then the city solicitor replied back that they, the open land between the cemetery wall and Bambalina's building is part of the property owned by the Sheas. So if you look at where the land, the buildout stops, it's right at that kind of cemetery wall, so it's not necessarily the building or the cemetery, there's like a space in between that it goes out to, that's what the six feet is.
Six feet is still on.
Correct, yeah, or a budding, it's not on, but I don't know what the proper term is, a budding, next to.
But it's their property, not city property.
Correct, yeah.
They be charged more for this extra square footage?
Yes.
And will they go back to the SRA for the holes that they didn't have?
I do believe this is still in front of the SRA, yes, but I could get clarification on that, I don't necessarily have that. That's not our purview, though, so our purview is just the square footage. If there are any other approvals that they have to get, that's on them to get.
And this will not change their occupancy permit, correct? Like, do they think that they're going to be able to have more occupancy with this extra square footage where they can only have, I think it's 80 or 84 occupants? Do they think they're getting more seating because they're expanding their square footage?
Well, I looked at the original application and then what's in front of us now, and it both has, I believe it was 30 seats outside, like, the outside seating number didn't change.
Okay.
I don't know if the building department has anything to add to that. I'll note that we have joining from the building inspection department, Greg and, Greg Salamander and Gail Cubic. I was close. Gail, if you don't mind speaking right into the mic.
Hi. So regarding the occupancy, their current occupancy is for 84, and they have requested 105. When you look at occupancy, when you perform an occupancy calculation according to the building code, you actually perform it two ways. The first way is by looking at the plumbing fixture count and how many people can the bathrooms currently support, which is what produces that 105 number. And then the second way is looking at the physical space and how many seats and tables can you fit in the physical space, and that produces the 84 number. The way the outdoor dining works is that, according to the policy and inclement weather, they're supposed to be able to bring the people who are dining outside inside. So that 84 number is what we need to hold to, because if we permitted them to have 105, they wouldn't be able to physically seat 105 in their actual space. So their, their actual occupancy is 84, and that 84 has to be divided between the outdoor seating and the indoor seating. So you can have 44 inside and, you know, 40 outside, or whatever that delineation is, but you can't have 84 inside plus out. It has to total 84. Hope that clarifies.
That did. Thank you very much.
Anything else, Counselor Jerusalem? Counselor Verella?
Thank you, Chair Stott. So, just one question, just for some housekeeping here. I know that you said that the architect and the building department did re-measure, and it seems like it's 447, 448. For just good housekeeping, are we going to up that number to 450 or something like that, just to make sure it's consistent?
It's 448.
448.
It's 447 with a percentage, and when you round it up, it's 448.
Should we round it up to 450? I feel like if we went out and measured all of these, they might be off 4 or 5 feet, like, it's a very, I'd say 450 would be a good number. The committee agrees to that, that would be.
Excellent. And then my other comment was, when it comes to the extra space, I have dined at Bambalina recently, and it seems like that extra space is just going to help out when it comes to our, you know, ADA and accessibility, it just creates a little more room, but as you said, that they're not really adding any more tables. So with that, obviously, I'm in support of this, and, you know, when the time is right, let's do it.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Harvey?
Thank you, Chair. My only concern is that we're just setting a precedence for the rest of the restaurants within the city, whereas they've submitted drawings for 380 square feet, they built it to 448 square feet, which obviously is bigger than what it was submitted for, and it's almost like they're asking for forgiveness instead of permission at this point. I just feel that, you know, if it was designed at 380 square feet, they should have stuck to the 380 square feet, because like I said, I just don't want to set a precedence with everybody else's, okay, well, we'll build it, and then we'll go before the council and ask for forgiveness after the fact. I mean, that seems to be what was done here, not, that's just my point of view. I mean, obviously, you know, exactly what, you know, Counsel Verella just said, it's probably a little more accessible, but it's just, I feel like there's going to be more to come if we start setting a precedence and saying, go ahead, build it, and then come ask us if it's okay after the fact. And, you know, being a builder, if I'm given a drawings to build 380 square feet, I build 380 square feet. You know, they should have come and asked for the permission before it was built, not after the fact. That's my point. Thank you.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Chair. I think that it's really important, and I know Counselor Verella said a similar thing when we first talked about this, but when we're making decisions about the outdoor dining policy, I think the most important thing is that we're actually aligning that with what is in the outdoor dining policy, right? The decisions that we're supposed to be making about if someone can do outdoor dining and how they do it, has to, the things we're supposed to consider, like the text says, is the health and safety of residents, ADA accessibility, public benefit. I think the public benefit is really clear, right? We're talking about a small business that everyone loves, you know, that employs people, employ more people, the bigger the outdoor dining space is, rather than saying, you know, we want to hold this over a business's head and punish them for not going through the proper channels. You know, I think that we should make a decision based on what we're supposed to consider, right? You know, and I think when it comes to precedents, there's a much more dangerous precedence that I worry about, which is that if we're allowing boards and departments to make decisions not based off the texts that, that we spend a lot of time on and pass in council, we're opening up the door for a lot of decisions to be made for political reasons and out of spite and out of the idea that we want to punish certain business owners. You know, maybe a department head doesn't like a certain business owner, or they felt like they were slighted or didn't get the respect that they wanted, I'm not saying that, you know, any of that's okay, but again, we've got to make decisions based on what the ordinance is that is in front of us. I mean, I think a much more appropriate way, if there's counselors that feel like we need to amend this outdoor dining policy to say, you know, if someone doesn't go through the proper channels, here's what the proper, you know, repercussions should be, but I don't think it's appropriate to have that conversation in this context.
Counselor Verella?
Thank you, Chair Stott. Through you to Ms. Cubic and Mr. Salamida, when it comes to the review of any outdoor dining patio that is submitted to your office, do they necessarily need an architectural stamped drawing, or in this case, we have one because of the elephant in the room, the augmented change?
Most times, they do require an architectural stamped drawing. It's not required for SRA review, but for the actual outdoor dining permit, the EPOD review, we do require it, because we need to see, sorry, but we just need to see that seating count. We need to see the actual clearances held for ADA, we need to see the 5% of their total seating being accommodating for accessibility, and we need to see the plumbing fixture count, and we need to see how many seats are inside and how many are outside, and a photo of an outdoor patio doesn't provide all that information.
Awesome. Now, thanks for the clarity, because I know, like you said, the SRA does not look at an architectural stamped drawing. I just want to make sure that, I'm sure if we measured all of the outdoor dining we have, does it actually meet what they've submitted? I hope it does, but I know that that's obviously something we're, we're working on, I'm sure.
If I can just comment, that's part of our follow-up. So once we issue the permits, Greg and I have practically weekly meetings where we do go out and we visit a select few at a time each week, and we're physically out there measuring. We're counting seats and tables, and we're measuring the outside dimensions, and where, you know, I bring all the SRA documentation for what was approved, I bring the plans, whatever they submitted that was approved, I bring the square footage that was approved, and we're sitting there calculating it. And if they're over, because as you mentioned, some of them are over, but it's only by, you know, a foot or two, we tell them to wrangle it in, we tell them, adjust your stanchions, bring this planter in more, make sure that this is seven feet, not eight feet out into the, into the public way. So we, that's part of our review every week.
If I may ask a follow-up question to that, just so we can get, if you're all set with your, if we could get an idea of the timeline of events here that happened with this one, because this is our first year with this full process of SRA, Disability Commission, council approval. The SRA approval was submitted back in like February or March, and that was done. I don't believe you, the building department came into play with actual rendered architect drawings until further down, until there were approvals done. So when this was in front of the SRA, as Counsel Verella was alluding to, they did not have architecture drawing, and when it was in front of us, we did not have the architecture drawing. So yes, while we said 380 feet, that was an estimate, and I can, I can understand a business not, the architecture drawing is not free, it's not cheap, waiting until they get, you know, approval to move ahead. It does need to be corrected once mistakes are found, and it probably should have been corrected sooner, but we're here now. But I do think there was definitely some bumpiness in the process of how the approvals happen and when they happen, and when things get done. There was a lot of confusion this year with, with that aspect of it, so, yep.
So, so just to, to add to that, even though an architectural drawing is not cheap, and it is kind of required for the EPOD permit, the outdoor dining permit, if you're not changing your outdoor dining year from year, you can reuse the same architectural drawing. If you're submitting every year for the same layout, the same number of tables, the same ADA capacity, just get it once and submit it, and then you can submit it every year, and we will accept that. And the only time we will ask for an updated drawing is if you're actually going to change your occupancy or expand your square footage of your outdoor dining area.
Yep, good to know. Counselor Jerusalem?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with Counselor Harvey. This is definitely going to set a precedent, and we're not trying to harm any businesses or anything, but what's to say all the other businesses, outdoor dining, say, whoa, they got extra 60 square feet, why can't I move my planters and take up another parking space or not? Then we're opening up a huge can of worms. I know last year, the council worked on this ordinance, and you both were part of it for many months, and they set parameters and rules, and people have to follow the rules. And I think now that they're actually requesting, and I know this isn't on vote for tonight, but now they're actually asking for a requested 105 occupancy, I think this is, if they get an inch, they're going to take a couple more feet, so they're going to ask for more occupancy, which they have to go in front of the state for that. That's the state, correct? That's like a state requirement for the occupancy?
They would come to us, but their space physically can't seat 105 people inside.
Okay.
It's just the plumbing count that it can accommodate 105 bodies using the restrooms, but they don't have the seating for 105.
Okay, thank you. I just, what happened, the whole thing, it's not just the square footage, they put a roof on without a building permit, there's a lot of things that they've gone that wasn't right to begin with, and I know we're only here for the square footage, but I think they need to go back to the 380 square feet, and next year, if they want to make it bigger, they come forward and they do it right from the very beginning, from step one, just like all the other businesses have done, and then they can start anew. But I think this year, they should go back to 380, and they should do it right. That's the rules. I can't say, I want to extend my front porch another 10 feet, but hey, I'm a nice person, and I'm just going to do it and not ask for a building permit. That's what you're saying here if you vote for this. So that's just my take on it. Thank you.
Counselor Harvey and Counselor Davis?
Getting back to, thank you, Chair, getting back to what Counselor Davis said previously, all of this was in the ordinance. It was all supposed to be what was approved by the ZBA or the planning board or whoever, according to the ordinance, which they requested 380 square feet, and they were approved for that, but they built 300, so it, it went according to the ordinance, so it's not like we're, you know, getting back to what you were saying, like, favoritism with a business and political elites or department heads. It's, according to this, and the way this happened, was according to the ordinance, was what they were allowed to build, and they went above and beyond and then asked for permission to keep it, instead of doing what was originally in the proposed, proposed to drawing from the, from the restaurant, so, thank you.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Chair. So this is, I mean, this is a kind of point that came up in the, the city council meeting, we talked about this as well, the idea that, you know, it's not our job to question the decisions of, you know, boards and, you know, departments. I really disagree with that. I mean, I think that if something's coming before us in the city council, or we're sitting down to have a committee meeting about it, what that says to me is that it's our, you know, it's our, we have the authority and the responsibility to review those decisions and make sure that the right ones are being made. My question, when it comes to, I mean, this idea of kind of like opening up the floodgates, right? I mean, if, if a restaurant was to have more people, if they were to have more people than they're allowed to, based on, you know, your judgment in terms of their capacity, what would be kind of the guardrails in place, or what would, you know, what, what kind of levers are there for enforcement to stop them from doing that?
Well, I'm just going to jump in there, because we're not here to discuss occupancy. It's not on the agenda this evening, it's literally just the square footage, and there are other, there's a whole other slew of approvals and processes that's needed for that, so I don't think we can even begin to open that can of worms here without a separate order to have that conversation and discussion. The discussion that is in front of us this evening is the change of square footage approval from the 380 to now we're saying 450 square feet.
If I may, I mean, I think that was kind of the point that I'm getting to, right? Is that if the, if there's no worry that someone can, that they can add to their capacity, because that would be dealt with through the proper channels, I just have a, I'm struggling with this kind of slippery slope argument, right? Them having, what I'm trying to get at is them having 80 additional square feet, is that impacting accessibility, public benefit, public safety, because that's what this ordinance is about?
Yep, and if I may add, again, this is the first year of us doing this process, which this information can be reused every year, and if another business that is in the first year of doing this process comes in front of us and says, I need another 100 feet, but I still fall within the parameters of the food outdoor dining policy that you have set, such as it has to be within the storefront lines, it has to have approvals, all of those, if everything else is ticked off, I don't see that as a slippery slope, I see that as us following our ordinance, but that's just my thought. Counselor Verella?
Thank you, Chair Stott, and I will echo on that, that what's in front of us today is obviously about the square footage, and every applicant has the ability to amend and come back to us if there is additional change, which, at this point, this is the process we're through. So I find that they're requesting additional square feet, and that's up to us to decide if we want to do that tonight.
Yep. I will add that there were other things that were done that brought this to everyone's attention, and I don't think any of us here agree with that manner, but the manner that, or the item that is in front of us this evening is, is just the square footage change. Any other comments or questions from the council? Oh, okay. I will check to see if there's anyone online or in the public that would like to make comment. If you would, you can make your way to the podium.
Thank you, Counselor. Justin Bates, 313 Essex Street. I'm here to support the favorable recommendation of 450 square feet now for outdoor dining. I think the, the idea of this being a precedent-setting opportunity, I think, is the wrong way to look at it. I think this was a mistake, as the small business owner himself said, this was a mistake he made when reading the policy, when implementing the design of the pergola. I think it is on the committee here to be able to differentiate between a malicious decision and a mistake, and as this small business owner has relayed, and I think we have to take best intentions in mind and believe him when he says it, that this was a mistake. So I, I hope that the committee here can legislate on a people-first policy and not center a punitive response, but center a collaborative response, and use this as an opportunity to learn, especially if this is the first year of implementation here, as a vehicle for next year, making it better, making the information, the education that the small business owner, that the business owner receives more robust, more informative, more clear. So I hope you vote favorably for the 450 square feet. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. If there's anyone else, if you're joining on Zoom, you can use the raise hand function, or if you're in attendance, you can make your way to the podium.
Good evening, Counselors. Tim Hague, Bambalina Restaurant, 288 Derby Street. Obviously, there's a lot of controversy about the way the patio was built out this year. I definitely made some mistakes there. I was under the impression that the emergency COVID regulations were extended again this year, which is totally my fault. In fact, what happened was municipalities were allowed to make changes to liquor licenses within the city rather than having to go to the state. So that was the news that I got. I thought that kind of voided this whole process, totally my bad. We lost tens of thousands of dollars in income in the weeks that we weren't open. Restaurants have very, very, very slim profit margins. My biggest gripe there is the 2,500 bucks a week that was out of our servers' pockets. Those are the people that were really hurt by this process. I felt absolutely terrible, because it was obviously falling on my shoulders that that On May the 11th, DPW set jersey barriers out along Derby Street for our patio, and I texted Ray from DPW at 9:42 in the morning, asking him to remove three jersey barriers, because they were under the assumption that we were going to use another 25 feet of Derby Street, which was never our intention, right? So they did come, I don't know if you can see these photos, but I Xed out the jersey barriers that I asked them to remove, they removed those, and then a couple of weeks later, or a week later, I asked him to remove the end jersey barrier even closer to our patio to not obscure that first metered parking space, which is on Derby Street, which would be to the west side of the patio. So I was really trying to do everything that I could to maximize the amount of public space and retain as much parking as possible, and then I used as much space as I could within the framework of the jersey barriers that were set, right? So if I shaved one linear foot off of the whole length of the patio, that's one foot of no man's land, right? Like, that one linear foot by 44 feet in length wouldn't provide any additional space for pedestrians. The cycle path there is five feet and three inches wide, so, you know, it meets the regulations for the width of the cycle path. The vehicle lane there was designed by a contractor called Tool, that the city engaged a couple of years ago, or maybe four years ago, to design the traffic layout. So we were trying to maximize the amount of outdoor dining that we had. The more outdoor dining we have is more tax revenue for the city, it's more outdoor dining for our constituents in Salem, and then also people visiting from out of town. People prefer to eat outdoors. I'm sorry, I put 380 square feet. I think the original application, I might have put 280 square feet. I'm definitely not an architect, I probably need to use a calculator every time that I do anything with numbers. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jerusalem?
Nice to meet you, Mr. Height. Do you own a measuring tape?
I do, too many of them.
How did you not see 60 extra square feet when you were measuring? That's what I'd like to know.
Because the patio is eight feet wide at one end instead of seven feet wide.
So you don't have a measuring tape that will measure it correctly?
Yeah, I honestly didn't think that, you know, using an extra foot of no man's land, if I can call it that.
60 square feet extra, or more actually, 68 square feet extra. That's not a foot.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to comment, all comments and questions go through the chair, please. Any other comments or questions from the committee? Thank you, Mr. Height. Counselor Verella?
Thank you, Chair Stott. We'll start with the amending of the square feet. So I'd like to make a motion that we amend Bambalina Restaurant, 288 Derby Street to occupy 450 square feet.
Counselor Verella moves to amend the order in front of us to occupy, instead of 440 square feet, 450 square feet of city property for outdoor dining. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Davis. So any other further discussion on the motion? Nope. We don't have any Zoom attendees. So on the motion to amend the order to 450 square feet, seconded by Counselor Davis, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, three to two. Counselor Verella?
Thank you, Chair Stott. I'd like to make a motion that we refer this matter to the council for a positive recommendation as amended.
Second.
Counselor Verella moves to refer this to council with a positive recommendation as amended, seconded by Counselor Davis. Any further discussion? No? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, I see three in favor, two opposed. Any further motions? Counselor Verella?
Thank you, Chair Stott. I'm. Thank you, Chair Stott. Motion to adjourn.
Counselor Verella moves to adjourn. All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.